Six forty-five, we'll call the meeting in order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the world of our which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As customary, we're going to take a moment of silence. Over the last week, the DPWs suffered a major loss of one of their rooms to Kevin Baradis. Kevin was the foreman of the Tree and Park Division, longtime employee of the town of Whitman, dedicated employee. It's a tremendous loss to the town, to the DPW, and we would ask that you keep his family and friends in your thoughts and prayers. I'd like to announce this meeting is being recorded and televised by WHCA. It seeks a motion for approval of bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? I seek a motion for acceptance correspondence in the read file.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Public forum, if anyone would like to speak now, but anything that is not on the agenda. Seeing that, I seek a motion for approval of meeting minutes. Open session, March twenty-first, twenty-first, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? In Chief Clancy's absence, I would give the COVID update. Of the 212 tests performed, we had five positive cases for a positivity rate of 2.36%. Once again trending in the right direction. Seeing that Mr. Cleary's here, if we could, let's take Mr. Cleary out of order. Come on up, Kevin.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes tonight. I guess what I'd like to do, just kind of give you a quick update on the DPW project and go over a few events that we have kind of coming up. So, but a week and a half ago, on April first, we had our first open house tours. I think it went very well. The weather was horrible, but I think we had a very steady flow of people coming through and were able to walk them through the facility, show them what we have, what we don't have. And I think as a committee member and other committee members there got some good feedback, you know, questions and things like that. So we have another tour open house on the 22nd, Saturday, the 22nd. We're going to get a few trucks out there. Hopefully, the weather will be better, do touch a truck, you know, kind of kids want to come down and see some of the trucks, see some of the equipment and obviously let the residents, you know, walk through, be doing tours. We'll be cooking some burgers and dogs and, you know, again, just allowing people to come through and see it. We also have scheduled on the 26th at 6:30 in the Town Hall Auditorium, kind of a question and answers for the residents to come in. We'll have our owner's project manager there, we'll have our architect engineer there, committee members will be there, short presentation, and then obviously, you know, open it up to any questions, you know, to try to, you know, obviously educate people, you know, about the project. Our website is up and running, has been for, I think, about a month now. WhitmanDPW.com has a lot of good information, has a nice video that Whitman Hansen Cable Access helped us out with that really gives you a good picture of what we have. We'll be adding some more information to that, you know, as things change and, you know, right now, we're just finalizing some frequently asked questions and those will be put up there. So again, a good resource. I know that's been out there on Facebook and things like that and the link, it's on the web, it's on the town website and things like that. So, you know, we're getting the word out there. So the committee itself, obviously, the committee's been working hard over the last just about a year now since we got the $1.1 million appropriated at the last annual town meeting. You know, in the fall, we hired our OPM just right before Christmas. We got our architect engineer onboard and for the last four months, we've been working through schematic design into a more formal design. You know, the architect engineer came to the committee with three different proposals, three different options. The committee went with the option that we're going to be presenting, which is a complete facility with storage space, mechanic space, and admin space. It will, the front building will be removed as part of the project. The back building will be refurbished. We're going to use as much of that as we can and then obviously we'll be adding new space for, you know, mechanics, admin, and then the things that we need so desperately. So that's what, that's what we're proceeding on right now. We're at about a 50 to 60% design at this point. We do have some initial cost estimates. Right now, the article warrant that we have in the ask for the town at time meeting, we are in around the $17.8 million. So that would be in addition to what we've already appropriated. So, I mean, that has, you know, as a committee, we're still looking at that number, you know, talking about what we can do to lessen that without taking away from the size of the building, you know, the basic features that we need. And that's something the committee will continue to work on. You know, it, right now, our timeframe is filed sub bids in probably early June, early to mid-June, again, if we're successful. You know, and then a couple of weeks after that would be general bids, again, if everything goes successfully. So we're still on schedule for that, you know, that we would be coming right out of the gate with the construction project and, you know, it's 12 to 13 months of construction once we would start. So the committee's been doing a very good job, really getting into the details and getting us a building I think that we need and, but also making it the most cost effective for the town. That's, I mean, I guess I don't have, you know, that's just one of the, kind of get some gentlemen to look at there.
Well, I'll tell you, the meeting I went to, I think the architect did a fantastic job of explaining the whole project and, and I think what was an ad alt that now has become the, you know, part of the project, it just makes sense to finish the building right rather than having an outlined building that is going to need serious renovation after that. So being at that meeting and, you know, and I kind of joked that night, but, you know, we were talking about reducing a toilet here and it just, it brought into perspective of just the, you know, the cost of this project definitely is in, you know, the forefront of everyone in that committee's mind, which I greatly appreciated. If anyone who hasn't seen the project, I definitely recommend, so that would be the 26th here in Town Hall.
Yep.
Starting at 6:30.
Yes.
That'll basically be the presentation he gave that night.
Yes.
And then on the 22nd, what were the times of the water?
We're doing nine to two, is what we have out there. And obviously, if there's people still there, we'll keep the doors open, you know.
And I guess my other question is where, you know, we're looking at the sub bids, mid-June, general bids, the committee's confident to still move forward?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
May election?
Yes, absolutely. And I think that working with the architect, that schedule is still attainable.
Anyone else?
So we're at a 50 to 60% design roughly. When do we think we'll have the completed, I guess, shovel-ready architectural drawings that we included in the article last year?
So I guess using that timeframe, we would need them, if we were, you know, if we were successful, to file sub bids in early June.
Okay. Is it out of, I guess, out of sequence to, I don't know how these typically run, but to vote the article, the funding of the thing before we have the final drawings? Or how does a?
Well, I guess at this point, we have a very good idea. You know, we have the costs and if anything, we're trying to trim some things off that to lower it. You know, we have an accurate cost estimate. Obviously, it has contingencies in there, you know, you have to, obviously, you include that. And what we're doing now, we're trying to lower the cost.
Yeah.
You know, so we're not going to add anything more that's going to increase it. You know, we're looking at different things we can do around the site, things that we can do with the existing areas, you know, with different, you know, soils and things like that of, you know, getting that information. So if anything, we lower the cost.
I went to one of the meetings, I thought it was really impressive, the way that they talked about the building and the design, and I think it certainly warranted and necessary. I do have concerns about voting this at town meeting before the design is complete. For me personally, I would rather hold off, get the complete design and then vote maybe at a, at a later date when we have, I mean, I was at the meeting with it where he was, I can't remember the, the OPM's name.
Neil's the OPM, Greg was the architect.
Maybe it was Greg, but he was saying he was really open to get us the numbers before town meeting and he was going to push hard. And that's kind of what I was, I was hoping for, that we'd have those numbers before town meeting, but it sounds like we won't have them until after town meeting.
We were hoping to have 100%, you know, and that was always the intent a year ago. You know, there were a couple of little bumps in the road that put us behind a little bit and he, up until even, I think, maybe that meeting or the one just before, he was on board, it was one item with the structural engineer that, his structural engineer just couldn't give him the commitment. He had commitments from his other, you know, MEP subs and, you know, geotechnical and civil and all that. And he just didn't, you know, I appreciate that, he wasn't going to, you know, be able to get us that because of that, the one. I, like I said, I think we have a very good number, we have a good budget, and I think at this point, it's only going to go down from there, that we're just trying to trim some things without taking away from the functionality of the building.
Yeah, I appreciate the feedback for sure, but for myself personally, I'd rather, especially with the climate of us borrowing money and the number of projects on the table, I think really being thorough and taking our time and doing things right, for me, is, I would rather wait and have the number in hand rather than vote without the number, definitively.
I guess the, it's still just an estimate. You know, obviously, we can't go to bid without funding, you know what I mean? So it's, it's an estimate, I think it's a good estimate, you know, and I think we're, we'll have, we're confident in the number that we have.
Frank Lineham, I'm a member of the committee and I want to be sure that we don't miss what Kevin just said. We cannot go to bid, even if we have all of the numbers, if we have all the estimates and we bring them in here, we can't go to bid until town meeting votes the money. We can't bid before we have project funding. So I just want to be clear about that. It doesn't matter whether we have it in June or July or May. Until town meeting votes, we don't have a project.
And I just, I do share some of Sean's concerns. I went back to watch last year, that part of last year's town meeting because there was a lengthy discussion on this, and I think it was Frank who actually came up and tried to move it along, but said that, you know, we would hire an OPM, seek an architect, and then come back with design plans and cost estimates to town meeting for funding. So I just, I'm concerned that we're getting that. We're trying to jump the gun here to meet the annual town meeting deadline rather than providing what we told town meeting last year we would have.
Well, I guess we're, we're doing all that and we're going to have a design, we're going to have a design estimate and I'm confident it's going to be a very accurate estimate.
If I may, that's what the contingent fund is all about too. If we can come up with an estimate and if all of a sudden we find an issue, that's why we have that contingency to handle something like that. And my only biggest concern is when we dig into the soil and I, they're saying that we don't have a problem and I don't think we will, but it was a dump, it was a dump, but it was further back, further towards the hill, so, but we'll see. But that, we have a contingency amount put in there to cover anything that may come before us. So I think we're pretty well sufficient enough to put in a number at town meeting and feel comfortable that that will cover our project. And if it doesn't, it will cover the project, there's no two ways about it.
And I guess just to Dan's point, you know, the architects and his engineers have been on the site, they've done additional borings, they've done the analysis of the front building, you know, hazardous analysis, so, you know, those are the unknowns, obviously. You know, the new buildings are new buildings. You know, it's the soils and the existing conditions and they've spent a lot of time already on the site getting that information. So that's why I feel I'm confident with the estimates that we're getting.
Yeah, I think so.
And I think from the meeting I went to, I think that definitely alleviated some of the questions I had where, you know, he definitely had all the answers as far as the borings and talking about the pillars that they would save and, to me, it definitely answered a lot of questions. So I would say anyone who has interest in this project should attend that Q and A on the 26th because it does answer a lot of questions, I think. All right, that was just an update, right?
Yep.
Thank you, Kevin.
All good, all right, thank you, everyone.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
All right. Back onto the chairman's report. FY '24 budget, do you just want to give us kind of a?
Certainly.
Brief overview?
Sure. So the budget that we have here, you have both a copy of the annual town meeting articles with Article Two in this. We have presented a level budget here. We have used $293,999 of free cash to balance the budget. We have just made a couple of minor adjustments since the, I sent out an article to you, a draft earlier. Are there any particular questions on this?
And that has the school district at 5%?
It does. It has the school district at 5% and as far as our free cash, most of the free cash is used between the articles and closing the gap on the budget and that, I believe, is about $9,000 that is left. We've used everything on this budget, so it's very tight. I trimmed a lot as I went through the budget. It's balanced and, like I said, the $293,999, we had to use some free cash to close the gap.
All right. The reason why I put this on is we also unfortunately need to think if the school district does not lower their budget, that we will be making significant cuts to town At some point, we're going to have to talk about where we want to see those cuts come from. I don't think we need to be ready for that tonight, but it's probably close to $600,000 in cuts.
Over 500.
So for the next meeting, that is probably going to be a reality, that that's going to be part of the discussion to knowing that if they don't lower it, that we have to present that. We can also have the alternative budget, which we can try to get through, but we are going to need to put forward a balanced budget, which means the cuts are going to be real. So we're probably talking about multiple firefighters, multiple police officers, possibly closing the library, and it's unfortunate.
We were talking at $560,000, so that's going to be a lot.
Yeah, what's a, what's a, I mean, rough estimate for a salaried employee? It's, I mean, I know public safety would be higher than the other unions, but 50, 60,000 per?
50,000 maybe? I mean, and some, of course, lower.
So we're talking 10, 12 people?
We're talking significant cuts, absolutely, without a doubt.
Town staff of about 110, if I'm?
I'm sorry?
With the town staff total, is what, about 110 people?
Oh, we have a little over 100, yep.
So we were, I mean, letting go 10% of the town staff?
Oh, it will be significant and several departments will be impacted. There's no way around it with that kind of money. The schools, now they're meeting tomorrow night, is that correct? So hopefully, we will hear something soon for a percentage that we can plug in and see how short we'll be and then I certainly could work on that for next week's meeting if you'd like and see what, what options might be.
Wait till tomorrow.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're going to have to wait, but it is a discussion for the following week that we're, you know, we're at that time unfortunately that we're going to have to quit talking about the cuts and tell people?
See what they look like?
Where they're going to come from. All right. Under all business, recorded meetings, public meeting decorum. Mr. Lineham?
As you know from your draft warrant, I have originated and presented a citizen's petition for town meeting and it's brief. With your permission, I'll read it. To see if the town will vote to amend the town's bylaws to add the following provision: All town boards and committees shall make an audio or audio/video recording of its public meetings, excluding that portion of those meetings conducted in executive session and those meetings that are recorded by WHCA for enhancing cable access corporation. And Sid recordings shall be transmitted to WHCA for broadcast and placement on youtube.com for future access. I want to explain why I wrote that. As you know, there are a number of boards and committees that meet publicly and the information they discuss and the, the presentation of those meetings are public. I have an issue with a particular board that seems not to be very concerned about either propriety or professionalism, and I am talking about the finance committee. In several meetings that I have listened to audio recordings of, they participate in a bantering discussion that belittles the employees of the town that present to them, myself included, and I'm not that thin-skinned, by the way, but I find it difficult to understand why a board that's charged with the responsibility to make financial recommendations to the town would take such a side road into personal attacks on the various people that present to them. And in my estimation, the way to cure that is to make sure that everyone participates in the public process. Because I suspect if it was going on cable rather than for the benefit of the nine members of the committee and perhaps the four or five people that are present from the public, you would see a different demeanor and a different presentation. I know that the employees of this town, by and large, work very hard and diligently to do their jobs and we often do it, and I use the word "we" because I'm part-time right now, but I'll be done next week. We often do it facing public scrutiny and concern about what are you being paid, what do you really do, how hard do you work? Now, I understand that from someone that has no perspective on what it's like to work in this environment, but I really resent it when somebody who should understand it and has been involved in the process chooses the route of character assassination to talk about the town administrator or the director of technology or any of the other department heads that appeared before them to present budgets. And that's my motivation behind it. I just, I've listened to it enough and I think it's time to professionalize it. So that's the reason that this warrant will appear on town meeting and I sincerely hope that people consider supporting it because in the end, you'll have access to more information.
I have a question. What do you thought? In a sense, I have mixed feelings only because, you know, obviously, I've spent a lot of time in the finance committee and I really respect the work that they do and the time they put in. It's a, it's a service that the town greatly benefits from and I really respect the people in there that are doing it. But at the same time, I have obviously felt some of the tension from, you know, that stuff the commissary bringing up and I can't see why it would be, for selfish reasons personally, I would like it if they were, if they were either on cable or if there was an audio because I'd like to, on my own time, skip through and listen to some of the meeting just to gain more knowledge, you know, so there's that aspect. But I also think, like you said, transparency in this way does, in a sense, hold people accountable for, you know, the words that I'm speaking right now are going to be heard by people who want to listen and I have to be very careful about my words and I need to be careful about my professionalism. And I get, I do get concerned when there are employees of the town that are voicing that concern. And my only, my only reservation, I suppose, is could we, in a targeted way, you know, through Mary Beth Carter, ask certain committees to, listen, we're going to ask you to record your meetings and we're going to hold them on the shelf for a couple of months just because it's come to our attention that, you know, we have a little bit of concern and we think that this is the best way to kind of work through that right now. That's different than a blanket article that would, could be kind of difficult for all committees to have to do this and, and I'm just thinking logistically, would it be better just to target through Ms. Ms. Carter or have a blanket article is, I guess, what I'm going back and forth with?
The logistics are relatively simple. The, we have the technology right now to record and capture those meetings. All we need to do is add, basically, speaker conference phone to each meeting room and you can actually capture the audio from start to finish simply by dialing an extension. The state actually uses that in many of its areas where it holds public hearings. I probably wrote that a little bit out of frustration after listening to some of the things that were said in the recordings that we did obtain, which, by the way, were obtained by virtue of a public record request because the process is to record the meetings for record-keeping purposes until minutes are created and then the audio is supposed to be deleted. That process hasn't been fully followed, but I have also been denied records that I've requested, told they don't exist, only to find they do. And we as, to the public, are accountable for how we conduct business. And in the form of, forum of open meeting, it is the intent that the meeting be available to those who wish to attend, participate, or observe. I know that our neighboring town records all of their other committee meetings and actually does post them on, I believe it's on YouTube. I don't, I don't see it as punitive. I see, I see it more as informative, but when you I see, I see it more as informative, but when you know someone is watching and listening to what you're saying, you tend to craft your words a little more carefully. I have, I'm absolutely certain there are comments that could be treated as almost liable. I am not painting everyone with the same paintbrush. I want you to understand that. But I've also talked to the chairman about this proposal, he's fully aware of it, and he's opposed to it. He feels that if the recordings are made, then people aren't going to be as candid as they should be. And that's not the right way to run a public meeting either. I hope that addresses your question.
Well, I've unfortunately listened to some of these, and I 100% agree with this article. And my point being, although we're here on TV and we might have a crowd sometimes, the lack of a crowd does not mean you can just talk about people, slander people, lie about people, and just think, because, oh, this is what we do. Maybe the oversight shouldn't be on some committees, but I think to do it as a blanket overall, it doesn't target somebody. I think if we target people, we're gonna have a problem. I think we know the committee that's caused the problem, and unfortunately, you know, it's gonna cause a little bit of a headache for everyone else. But to record these meetings, you know, my thing, when I first started thinking about this, is if you're somebody who's just starting to kind of pay attention, you're seeing things in the news, you're seeing things, you know, on Facebook, and you want to come in and see what the Finance Committee is all about, you should be getting an accurate portrayal, an accurate picture of what's going on in our town. Because I'll tell you, if somebody was to walk in there after the last couple of meetings, they certainly wouldn't like any of us. They would think Mary Beth received a job that she didn't deserve, that your, you know, your time service didn't amount to much. It's pretty disgusting, to be honest with you. So I have no problem with this article. And if it holds people accountable, well, they should be held accountable, because a public open meeting is access to all. And we should be, I think every one of us, as Sean said, chooses our words carefully because they know they're out there, and this is being broadcast over and over again. So to provide that level of accountability is important to me.
Next.
Julia Nanigan, 28 Forest. I'm the Secretary of the Cultural Council. I don't know if that would be considered one of the ones that would be recorded, but I'm not typically afraid of cameras, but just knowing that I'm being recorded, like my heart's pounding a million beats per minute right now. And I know that we have trouble already keeping members of the, on the Cultural Council, and I wonder about having to have your face put out there on YouTube, like, without...
Your voice. I think we're just talking audio recording. So what Hanson does is they take that audio recording and they just upload the audio recording with some type of graphic that would say Cultural, Whitman Cultural Council.
And then it's just the audio. Okay, that makes me feel a little better. Like, I don't want my face all over, you know, I didn't do my hair. But I do like the idea of, you know, it's recorded and it's kept for a short period of time, you can go over it, maybe it doesn't have to be broadcast on YouTube, but that's just my two cents.
Hi, John Galvin, 41 High Street. I'm a member of the WHCA Board of Directors. As Mr. Lamatina just said, Hanson does this with a lot of their, if not all of their committees. It's an audio recording. It can be as easy as the audio recorders that currently sit in most of these meetings right now. That's an electronic file. It gets, you can email that, because they're generally pretty small, right to WHCA. WHCA is always starving for content. YouTube, you know, WHCA is not gonna be able to send, you know, people, staff members into, initiate this. They may be able to help you set it up the first time, but they're always looking for content, so it's an easy thing to do to just take the little file and email it over to WHCA what it is. We could probably set up a, you know, a standard form so that it's identified what it is and all that, pretty simple.
Chris Graven, 3622 School Street. Yeah, I'm thrilled to hear this is coming up, in that, you know, we're gonna be making a push or hopefully voting to record all meetings. I don't, I think it's the least that we can do as committee members, to be as transparent as possible. But I just kind of want to speak to the professionalism and the decorum, and frankly, the civility that I've always felt needed to be addressed, a lack of, in some of our public meetings. And, you know, I'm talking about meetings that I've sat in and meetings that have been broadcast. And I think we owe it to the residents of this town to conduct all of our business in a civil manner.
Good.
Yeah. Thank you.
May I say something?
Sure.
Okay, on this subject, I think by us putting this, putting this before town meeting and recording all public meetings, I don't want to just point a finger at one particular meeting. I think all meetings should be. Now, I was chairman of the Finance Committee for five years, and I'm talking about 20 years ago. And I tried to get Cable Studio to come in and do our meetings, because I thought the people should know what we're going through, the Finance Committee and doing the budget. And I'm just thinking how beneficial it would be for all the town committees if they want to, you know, if they're pushing for something that they're gonna do Cultural Council, we're having shows, we're gonna start our concerts in the park and things like that, they can almost broadcast it at their meeting, and it would be beneficial to them, to their meeting. And to see exactly what they're doing, and if the chairman of that committee would like to make a motion and like to say, like, we are looking for new members, it would get out there. I mean, I mean, the Whitman Express puts a lot of things out there, but they don't go to the Council of Council, they don't go to the Board of Recreation, they don't go to the Finance Committee unless, I mean, I used to email the person that wrote for the Whitman Express back then about what we voted on and what we're doing, just to get people the information ready for town meeting. And I think this would be beneficial to everybody who lives in Whitman. You can just go on your iPad or whatever and look up, go to WATD, and all of a sudden you say Cultural Council on the date? What are they talking about? What's going on? Our recreation? What's going on? Things like that. I mean, why not? I mean, it's nothing but promoting our town and what we do. That's it.
And just may as well, because everyone else is speaking on it. I have no problem with this for town employees, town volunteers. I just want to think about for a second, the zoning board and planning board, where there will be members of the public seeking, you know, a variance to build an in-law or neighbors speaking on behalf of other things, where it's not necessarily, they didn't sign up for this, they've just been invited to a public hearing to voice their concerns. So that's the only hesitation I have, but by and large, I think this is a good move toward transparency.
All right. Next up, under Old Business, discuss Whitman Middle School debt exclusion, mainly talking more date of the special town meeting and ballot vote. As we all know, the middle school committee is looking for a date to be held sometime in November, a special town meeting sometime in November and a ballot vote to follow. There was much discussion about having that vote pre-holiday time. We did hear from the clerk about the possible pitfalls of doing the dual election. So I open it up to the committee for some further discussion.
Well, if November seems that is what the committee feels would be beneficial, why not just go with November? I mean, it's, you know, it's somewhat their call, and if they think that's beneficial, and they can have the information ready. And I did talk to Fred Small, and he said that any time after November, there's gonna be a cost increase because of the OPM, the contract, I believe, with the OPM and whatever is, ends around that time. And if we wait till January or February, they're gonna have to come up with a new contract that's gonna cost more money. So it might be cost-saving in that area. So I mean, if they feel that November is the time to get it done, and they've, I'm totally sure that they've discussed it, why not?
Well, I think the previous discussion was having a vote of this magnitude, pre-holiday and lower turnout.
Oh, the summer would be Christmas, and that would even, November, Thanksgiving?
I like the other proposal that we heard, and I'm gonna stick to, I'd rather see the vote after the holidays, but I think we could do a special second week and then follow up with a ballot vote after that. So my position on it hasn't changed. I do take into consideration what the clerk said, and I do see the pitfalls of the trying to run it with the primary. So we'll let everyone talk on it, and then we'll vote on it.
Yeah, so I, I think Mr. Galvin proposed what might be a timeline that gets us furthest away from the holidays by moving sooner. So if this board were to call for a special election and call for a special town meeting before the MSBA vote, but for the election and town meeting to be after the MSBA vote, we could get a, I think MSBA is the 25th of October? 26th of October? We could have a special town meeting on October 30th. We would have to call for it before they officially do it, but we can postpone that if need be. But that October 30th special town meeting and then a special town election on November 4th, the Saturday that follows that, we would be well before Thanksgiving, well before the holidays, right in line with when a November election normally is, and we wouldn't have to extend the OPM contract a couple of months. So I think that might be the, and I don't think we'd have to move the MSBA, ask to change to a different month for their vote, so it might be able to thread the needle there.
I think they still have to file an extension.
From the September to the October, still, yeah.
I'm definitely leaning in that direction. I was originally, when you, when Justin made the, was talking about having it in March, made sense to me because getting a higher turnout is really essential, I think. But the confusion that was, that was mentioned by the clerk is definitely something that I'm weighing, you know? That, then with the added cost for pushing it further, I think it makes sense to have it sooner at a date that's identified, that we could really get people out to vote, so we could still have a strong turnout. Seems to be the best option for me.
All right.
So Lamatina, just real quick, John Galvin, 41 High Street. Just to answer your question, we are currently scheduled for the October meeting with the MSBA, but we do technically still need to file an extension just to get to there. So we've been holding off filing the extension until the board has voted, but I appreciate your consideration tonight.
So the only question is, do we want to vote tonight? Do you want to wait for a full board?
Oh, yeah, probably the full board. Cola has some input that we...
And we are meeting next week, so...
Yeah, Cola will be here next week, right? Yeah, we can wait one week.
When's the next middle school building committee meeting? Are we gonna put them off at all, or?
It is...
Our next building committee isn't until the 28th, so it's not putting us off a lot to go next week.
All right. So we will wait and...
Would that work, John? If we meet next week and full board and come up with the...
Right.
Thank you.
Seeing at 7:30. We have a public, sorry, executive session hearing scheduled for 7:30. 7:30 PM executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than the professional competence of an individual extended sick leave. We will also be in executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, COVID coordinator. The third executive session will be pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law, discuss the process for approving executive session minutes. So we will reconvene back in the open session following this.
So a motion to go to executive session?
Second.
And voice vote?
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes for an executive session. And I will vote yes for an executive session.
Okay, we're back in open session. Just to make the public aware, we're going to act on three executive sessions. The final executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law. We will be approving and voting discussion of meeting minutes the next meeting. No action was taken on that. All right. Next item on the agenda, act on the request to hold the Fourth Annual Dollars for Scholars Tree Lighting Event. Anyone want to speak on that? Thank you for waiting.
Michelle Lamatina, on behalf of Whitman-Hanson Dollars for Scholars. I'm just coming back to the selectmen again this year to ask if we would be able to use the town hall and the park for our tree lighting event this year. Last year, we, every year, we do it for three days, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Last year, we used the town hall for Saturday to hold a vendor event. And also, we had some entertainment that was in there also, and that worked out really well. We had a lot of really good feedback, especially with the weather. It helped people come inside. The vendors liked, you know, still liked walking around seeing the vendors. So this year, we would like to actually extend that vendor event and possibly use town hall beginning Friday evening, say, like four or five o'clock, and have the vendors there Friday night. And then back Saturday, late afternoon, early evening, for a vendor event. And then we would clean up Saturday and Sunday, but we would use, you know, outside on Sunday also. This is one of Dollars for Scholars' biggest fundraisers of the year. As everybody probably knows, every bit of money we raise goes right toward scholarships for graduating seniors. And we have, we set a hefty goal every year, so we're still trying to set, meet that goal this year, which is $160,000 this year. We're close to it, so if you're out there and haven't donated yet, please donate. So this would be for next year's scholarships. But it is a great event. It, it, you know, highlights Dollars for Scholars, but also a lot of other people in the community. We invite different students to perform. You know, there's vendors that are a lot from, from the area. The people that participate in the trees are all usually from the area, and everybody seems to really like it, and it's good for the town. The police and the fire department help us out a lot over the weekend, and we appreciate that. And so we're just looking to see if we could possibly hold it that whole weekend, the December 8th, 9th, and 10th. And if it is available as soon as we know, so we can start kind of advertising a little bit. We've had a lot of people already reach out to us, believe it or not, looking to book their tree, or are you going to have the vendor event again? I have a friend who wants to do it, so the sooner the better, if that's okay. And we appreciate your support.
I'll make that motion. Then we hold it for the, the two days of town hall and one day at the ball field.
Well, it would still be three days in the ball field.
Oh, still be three.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday in the ball field, but just the town hall use would be Friday and Saturday, so we could run the vendor event.
Oh, both, both together.
Yeah, so both together.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
So we have a motion for December 8th, 9th, and 10th, 2023, for the Fourth Annual Dollars for Scholars Tree Lighting Event. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. So will you just confirm that those dates are okay and let us know?
And I'm sure they probably are, but I will confirm that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, act on the request of the Board of Health permission to use the animal shelter on Essex Street on Friday, June 23rd, 2023, from 10:00 to noon, in order to conduct a drive-through rabies clinic, clinic for cats and dogs.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion? I'll just thank the Board of Health for doing that.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Act on the request of Whitman-VFW Post 697 to hold its annual buddy-poppy drive at Stop and Shop and the post office on April 28th, 29th, and 30th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Act to appoint Angela McHugh as member of the Whitman Recreation Commission for the remainder of a three-year term through June 30th, 2025, in order to fill an existing vacancy, not as a full member.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Act to appoint Michael Simmons as member of the Historical Commission for the remainder of a three-year term through June 30th, 2025, in order to fill an existing vacancy.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Act to appoint Ann Holbrook as associate member of the Historical Commission for the remainder of a three-year term through June 30th, 2025, in order to fill an existing vacancy.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Act to appoint Francis Lineham as member of the Capitol Committee for the remainder of a three-year term through June 30th, 2024, in order to fill an existing vacancy.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You sure about that, Frank?
Welcome back. DPW Bruce Martin, request to add the roads as outlined in our packets. They're currently classified as unaccepted roads to the town accepted road list. This will need to be done by way of not only a vote of our board, but then it'll, they'll be placed on a ballot May 20th for the annual election.
So moved.
A second, but just, yeah, this goes to town meeting, not a ballot.
Oh, that was my second. Sorry. I mixed up. That is my fault. I mixed up the next two items. All right. So this will just be the accepted road list, and we'll publish that in the warrant, correct? Okay. And we'll vote that at a town meeting, but it also needs a vote of this board, so...
Any quick discussion?
Good.
The reason why this is important is because it, it'll affect our Chapter 90 funding.
Yep. Absolutely.
Right. And I talked to Mr. Martin about this. You know, these, some of these roads are 10, 15, even 20 years old, so...
Yeah, my parents' road is on this. It was, I think, built in 97, so we're, we'll back up it.
Yeah. It's definitely time, and, and he's looked, didn't see any major issues with any of these roads to adopt, so it is about time. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. For a question to be placed on the May 20th, 2023 annual town election ballot. Sorry, I confused it with the last one. I will read, shall the town of Whitman be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to pay cost of designing, constructing, and equipping a new Department of Public Works building, included, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto? So we, if I get this right, we are just, this vote is to place this on the warrant? Is that correct?
On the ballot.
On the ballot. What if town meeting doesn't vote it in the form of...
It'll still be on the ballot. Each vote is distinct.
Okay. All right. So moved.
A second.
Discussion? Mr. King.
I still do have reservations about putting this on the ballot and on the warrant before we have the, the full design. I like hearing your feedback, and I think it was helpful to have that discussion, but I, it just feels like, there's something about that that does cause me to pause, you know? Having the full design prior to, to bringing it before a town meeting, I think, feels important to me. But the way that, that Mr. Cleary talked about it, he didn't think that, well, that 50% to 60% now, right? He thought that where we're at now gave a pretty good indication about where they would be. If anything, he was thinking less. So he seemed to alleviate some of my concerns with his comments, but I still do have reservations about it.
Yeah. I just, I guess, have a, really a process concern, but just because last year, we, you know, saw 1.1 million from town meeting and said we'd come back with shovel-ready architectural drawings, and I just don't think we've met that, what we told them.
And Frank, given my interpretation of this is we're delayed because of not having time to qualify the bidders, correct?
Yes. The, the, the design required more legwork than we had hoped for, because we went from building a new building to superimposing a structure using the existing steel and framing. So it, it just backed us up several weeks. The problem is, if you don't vote it tonight, the 18th will be too late. You won't be able to put it on the ballot. You have to have 35 days from the time you vote to place a question on the ballot.
So...
So if you don't vote tonight, if you don't vote four votes tonight, it cannot be on the May 20th ballot.
And then you're looking at having both projects probably fall onto the, the same ballot, which...
Which is not good. For either one.
Any further discussion?
Seeing none, we have motion.
I would like a little bit further discussion, sorry, because it does feel like an important vote for me. So if he's at 50% to 60% now, at, at the town, at the time of town meeting, do you know how much closer it'll be to, to a full design, like at that point?
The full design will be done probably in early June, late May, early June, and then it's going to take 14 to 21 days to compile general construction bids. So the, the, the bidding for the job would not be complete until probably late June.
But he said, you were saying you couldn't, you couldn't get bids for the job until it's passed by town meeting anyways, right?
Right. In order to get general construction bids, you have to be able to show that you have the money to pay for the project, otherwise you're not going to get bids.
So what is the qualified bid process versus a general bid?
Well, the qualified bid is that the bidders have to be approved by DCAM and have to be checked. But it, the, the real issue is, when you go to bid for construction, if you don't have funding in place, then you have to bid for funding, and your responses are very different.
Just a couple more, maybe. In an ideal world, we would have the design fully complete before we go to town meeting.
I don't know that we've ever done that. We didn't with the police station.
Not with the police station.
I don't think we did with the schools. I mean, we had a feasibility study done, and we had the estimates and everything, but we didn't have actual bids when we voted it.
Because you can't bid out until power meeting votes the money. Are you going to vote, are you going to put a bid on something that...
The reason for that is it may not happen. If you don't have the money when you go to bid, particularly in a competitive bid market, people aren't going to waste time bidding on your project when they know this other project is funded, and if they get the bid, they're ready to work.
Yeah, maybe I'm just confusing, like, I want to know what the accurate cost will be to build the design that we'd like to build. You know what I mean? And I know maybe that can't, it can't be 100% accurate until you have an accepted bid, but if we're just going to ask for the town to support a building, that the, the architectural designs are complete seems to make sense to me, because completed architectural designs can then be computed as far as what we need.
Right. We, we can, we can get estimated...
We're going to have estimates.
Estimated thing, but...
We're going to have professional estimates.
Right.
But that, that's all they are. They're estimates.
And sometimes there's a bidding war, some people outbid other people or underbid other people, I should say, to get the project. So all of a sudden, what you think is going to cost you this amount is less, or vice versa. You know what I mean? We went through this with the police station, the town hall project, it's...
I think just maybe to alleviate Sean and my concern, this vote would, would create the town election article, but I imagine sometime next week, we'll have to vote the warrant.
Yes.
To post that, and that would be the other half of this vote.
Correct. The vote tonight would authorize a question on the ballot to do a debt exclusion.
Yeah.
That exclusion means nothing if you don't have an appropriation.
Okay.
And if you do have an exclusion, you have a year from the time it's approved to come forward with a project. In other words, if for some reason it didn't get voted at a town meeting, but did get approved for borrowing, that borrowing authorization is good for a year. You could rework it, come back, go to a town meeting and say, here's our project. Do you approve it?
So, yeah, I guess my concern is more with the town meeting side of it than the, can the town borrow in debt exclusion? So I, I think I'm okay.
It's a borrowing authorization.
Yeah.
It's totally what it is.
Anything further?
Yep.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of placing this on the ballot? A big ballot question. Unanimous. All right. Next up would be another vote question. A vote to place the following question on the May 20th, 2023 annual town election ballot. Shall the town vote to have its elected treasurer-collector become an appointed treasurer-collector of the town? Yes or no?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I think we've vetted this issue quite a bit previously.
Yep.
And know where we all stand, so...
I just have a question of the timeline, so if this were to pass...
Question, I'll raise that.
Because this is on the ballot along with electing our treasurer-collector.
We have on the ballot a question to elect a treasurer for three years, treasurer-collector, and we have a question to make it appointed position. If the appointed position question passes, the position becomes appointed once the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint someone, because they're on the same ballot. If you were midterm, the vote would allow you to appoint after the term expires.
Right.
But because both questions are on the same ballot, if the question passes, as soon as the board votes to appoint someone as a treasurer-collector, the position goes from elected to appointed.
Okay. So if our current interim treasurer-collector were to get himself sworn in very quickly after the election, it wouldn't matter? We would still have it appointed to appoint him?
Correct.
I can see the questions at town, at the town election.
All right. We have a motion.
Yep.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Next up, vote to add multi-factor authen, authentication policy to the town of Whitman personnel policies, policies, personnel policies and procedures.
Okay. So this was from Josh McNeil, our IT director. He'd like this added to the personnel policies and procedures, and the multi-factor authentication policy is really designed to minimize the potential security exposure to the town. So there's... So there's, when you log in to the system, when I log in from home, I'll then get a message to my phone that I'll have to then approve to get in. So you can't just log in with a password. It's an alternative way of checking to make sure...
Two-step.
Yeah, two-step process.
All right.
And it's really for security, and it's a great thing, so we think...
That's practice to you.
Does that mean that if we try to get into our emails, whitmanmass.gov, we would have to follow this procedure?
From home? Well, eventually.
Any login, if, once two-factor authentication is in place, whether you're logging in in the town hall or you're logging in from home, you will enter your username and your password, and you will then be prompted to approve it through authentication, which is either a token that you have that you hit yes on, or a message that comes on your phone that you say approve. But you have to do both now to connect to the network.
Don't send me any emails.
And that's, and that's actually going to be a very important part of our insurance policy this year, because they're requiring that we have multi-authification by June 30th.
And Josh is phasing this in by departments, the police, I believe, they've already...
Where are you doing it?
They're already doing it, so eventually they'll get through to all departments.
All right. Do we have a motion on that?
No motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Unanimous.
Thanks to Josh.
All right. Next up, vote to authorize the town administrator to approve, finalize, and submit on behalf of the town any such American Rescue Plan Act Opera Grant application, and to make all representations and certifications required to be made on behalf of the town. To complete each such application with such approval, representations and certifications to be evidenced by signature of the town administrator on such application. And if any such American Rescue Plan Act grant is awarded, the town administrator shall be the recipient of such grant on behalf of the town.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, vote to authorize the town accountant or assistant town accountant to prepare and enter information in the Plymouth County American Rescue Plan portal in support of one or more applications to the Plymouth County for American Rescue Plan Act grants to be funded from a grant received by Plymouth County under the American Rescue Plan Act.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
That's it? Any other your thoughts?
I have a couple of items.
Okay.
On February 21st, the deputy chief, Bombardier, discussed the proposal of a community resource dog. He discussed the value in having a comfort or community resource dog for the town, and he mentioned that the Whitman Police Department received a $5,000 donation from T&amp;K Asphalt, which can be used for 25% of the cost. He also informed the board that the department also received information that it is first in line for the MDA-A mini-grant in the amount of $5,000. The deputy chief also mentioned that the department will also fundraise for the remaining funds needed. Deputy Chief Bombardier's proposal was voted 5-0 by the board. However, a gift account needs to be established in order to accept the funds, and a vote of the board is required to set up the account. So we just need a vote of the board to set up the gift account for the community resource, right, on the books of the town, for the community resource dog.
Okay. So you need a motion, now, to, on behalf of the Whitman Police Department, set up a gift account for the community resource dog?
Yes. Second.
You have that?
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
It's a gift account for the community resource dog and not the police department?
It's for the funds that will go into, that will be spent for the community resource comfort rescue dog. But the funds, the donations, as the money comes in, it does have to be kept in, you know, a gift account, like the other town gift accounts, and any gift accounts that are set up do have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Anything else? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous.
Okay. Just an update. Carl, Justin, Chief Clancy, and I reviewed the employment resumes and cover letters which we received for the assistant town administrative position. We chose four candidates, which we will interview next week, and it's my intention to have a candidate to recommend to the Board of Selectmen within the next couple of weeks. Also, I would like to advertise the full-time 31-hour accountant's position in the next coming week. I hope to also have a candidate to present to the board in the next month or so. The assistant town accountant has assumed more duties and responsibilities since the former accountant, Ken Laitel, took over as the treasurer-collector, and she has done an excellent job for the past several months. The town also contracted with Eric Kinshor of CPA to assist with the more complex accounting entries and reports for this fiscal year, while the accountant's position has been vacant, and this has worked out very well. But I think it's time now that we advertise for that position, and I'd like to see a full-time accountant in place.
Right. Back to normal.
Right.
All right. So motion to...
It's just an update, really, or do I need a motion to advertise it?
No.
No.
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's more of an update.
All right.
And that's all I have.
All right. And then that has exhausted our agenda. I would seek a motion or adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you.